Thanks mate, thanks for the intro. Thank you for everybody who's dialing in from wherever you are. We've got a really good case study and real life example for you today on Liverpool City Council, which is a local councillor out of Sydney, Australia, who have done an amazing job with their digital transformation, and in particular around their Intranet. Now with us today, we've got Ben Granger-Holcombe from NEXON, who is the Valo partner in this engagement, and also Daniel from Liverpool City Council as well. And we'll get those guys to intro themselves in a minute. But it's a really good story, really good case study from coming from an existing Intranet, moving to Office 365 and in particular SharePoint Online. And these guys have done an amazing job with their Intranet, the way that it looks, the functionality and I guess the user experience that they have been able to create for the rest of the organisation. So it's a really good, really good story. We're going to dive into a lot of demos. So Daniel's going to take us through some live demos to some particular areas of interest that are providing some great benefits to their staff. So what we're going to do now is just do a couple of intros. Ben and Daniel can take the stage and tell us a bit about themselves, what they're doing. And let's get into it. So first off, Ben, you can unmute yourself and tell us a bit about yourself, who you work for, what your role is, and I guess what you put forward and what your involvement was in this entire engagement and the ongoing engagement.
Absolutely. Good morning, everyone, or from wherever you are. Great to be on the call and thanks for the intro, Daniel. Yeah, very exciting for us to see this take shape because it was an interesting sort of end-to-end journey, I suppose. We'd first, well, I probably stopped myself. So I'm Business Development Manager over here at NEXON Asia Pacific. We're a system integrator based in Sydney, but we've got presence all across Australia and sort of Asia Pacific as well. And my role is sort of business development, focusing quite heavily, I suppose, on what Microsoft call the modern workplace arena. So this whole sphere of sort of digital workplace very much fits into my wheelhouse, some of my sort of experiences and what I talk to a lot of my customers about. And I suppose where it started really was we had early engagement with Liverpool City Council when they realised that their current Intranet wasn't serving them well. And I'll let Daniel go through a little bit more of what that actually means. But we initially went in for a scoping engagement to really scope out, you know, where were the pain points? But also with these things, it's very useful to, people don't know what they don't know. If you're not up with the technology, you don't know what's available. So our role was quite crucial in trying to pick out all of those points and be able to document them well, but also show what is possible for the organisation. So we went through a whole process of that and that enabled them to then, for Liverpool to go to market in a tender way, not in a tender way, but in a tender process of which we were able to respond and we were very fortunate to win that tender. So that's really how we got involved with Liverpool. So I've been involved with them for about two years now since we first started the engagement. So that's probably enough for me now. Hand over to Daniel.
Over to you, Daniel.
Hello. Yes, thanks, Ben, and thanks, Daniel. My name is Daniel Lavrata. I am the Digital Services and Design Coordinator at Liverpool City Council. So I'm not sure where everyone's listening from today, but local government in Australia, it's an interesting place to work in terms of digital transformation. We're lucky at Liverpool in that we have a dedicated digital team. So I lead a digital team and part of that is leading a digital transformation process across council externally and internally. And what this specific project was about was, as Daniel mentioned, upgrading our internal Intranet, which for the longest time wasn't really being used across council. To give you some background about our organisation, we have about 1,000 staff across 17 different sites. So part of what makes an Intranet like this so important is the fact that internal communications is very important for an organisation such as ourselves. And I'm sure that wherever you guys are listening in from today, the same sort of lessons will be learnt in terms of, especially during COVID, about access and internal communication. So as Ben mentioned, we went out to a tender process and Ben got involved quite early and Daniel was our key contact on this project. And I guess from our perspective, there were a lot of learnings along the way, but we're really happy with the result that we got in our Intranet. And we've definitely seen a lot of improvements that we'll go through today when I show off the end product.
Thanks, guys. Okay, so moving on, Ben, I just wanted to speak to you a little bit briefly about, you're obviously working with a lot of, in the field, speaking to a lot of organisations, especially around Australia, in terms of modern Intranets and digital workplaces and that type of thing. Can you just touch on a little bit about what you're seeing as important components that people are, I guess people are looking for from their modern Intranets?
Yeah, absolutely. I think more than anything, and we've probably heard in from some of the other speakers prior to us, one of the key things, especially the last three months that we've all gone through, wherever we are in the world, a lot of organisations are working out or suddenly realising that they don't have easy engagement and consistent and quality engagement with their staff ubiquitous across the whole organisation. They don't have, you know, the technology, the methods and the experience of engagement. And I think that's one thing that a modern Intranet really brings is it brings what we see in the consumer world, certainly bringing that into the enterprise in a more social, dynamic and easy-to-access world where we've got flexible, engaging content. I think that's a key thing to keep people engaged as part of the organisation to really create this culture, which I think is very important because everyone knows what it's like to try and hire new staff. Onboarding and offboarding a staff is expensive, it's disruptive, and you want to retain staff and retain that knowledge and IP that have built up. So I think that's a really key point and something a lot of organisations are coming to us and talking to us about, especially this time. And the other thing is breaking down barriers within the organisation. You know, it's all very well of, you know, having those consistent lines of communication with your customers and sort of partners, vendors, that side of things. But it's how do you communicate internally across an organisation? And we found one thing that I think Daniel will probably speak to is that certainly in local government, it was very siloed. And we find that in a lot of organisations where business units just, they don't interact much and you find a lot of inefficiencies within an organisation because people are doing the same thing within their business units, but reinventing the wheel so many different times. So in trying to create that, that sort of consistent communication flow internally has been key and something we look to. And it's just trying to find information, you know, how can you find relevant content quickly and accurately? And that's something we focus on very heavily too. But of course, having all of your information there in the cloud, you know, pretty obvious to say that that whole security governance and compliance piece is key. And that's something that a modern Intranet really needs to deliver as much as the pretty easy access piece from the back-end side of things for the executives of the organisation. Of course, it's all about that security, compliance and governance.
It's really important, obviously with the current state of everything, to have that type of platform to be able to communicate really easily and people to access that type of stuff remotely anyway at the moment. Daniel, we're going to hand over to you to drive this one. And we've touched on, you touched on a little bit in your intro, but in terms of the council as a whole, you guys are obviously coming from an older platform. It was SharePoint? No, it was?
It was built, so our old Intranet was built in effectively a public-facing CMS. It was almost not built in anything specific for an Intranet. So it was exactly what our public-facing website was built in, just customised for an Intranet.
Yeah. And can you just tell us a little bit about, you know, the outcomes and the objectives and that business, those business drivers that really led to you, you know, looking at implementing your new Intranet?
Yeah, for sure. So there were a few reasons that we chose to go down this avenue with a SharePoint Intranet with a Valo solution. So one was that across the organisation, we had been moving towards more Microsoft products. Yama was highly already adopted across council. The other one was that we were already using SharePoint as asset management and OneDrive as asset management. So it made sense for us to move in this direction. As Ben mentioned, one of the key sort of sticking points for us was that how siloed everything is in local government. It's still, it still is a challenge. And what you find is that you have very different directories working differently and having dedicated systems to their own directories. And we needed to find a way to share information easily as well as having some sort of communication tool that was being able to be owned by the team. So a key sort of outcome for us was to have these sort of directorate and team pages that were owned by these teams, but then could be viewed and collaborated with other people across the organisation. So that's when we go into the demo, that's what I'll sort of show off. So as this list says, so workable search was another thing as well. And one thing I'm going to show off today is probably the best part of our Intranet is this Policies and Forms indexable page. So we, you know, government is endless policies and standards and procedures and stuff like that. So what we used to have is a very manual system where those sort of forms lived in a document management system, but then you would have to know specifically the form you're looking for or who that belonged to to find it. Now what we have is a nice list that's searchable and indexable that appears in multiple places depending on the way the user would think about that form. So that was really a key outcome for us. A flexible homepage, obviously. So we wanted something that, you know, we could be reactive with and change parts and elements of. And content ownership, as well as the governance side as well, as Ben mentioned before, is really important for us. Governance is obviously a key part of any local government organisation. And obviously, the key part is the content ownership. That was the way we approached it. So when we went to tender, those were sort of the elements that we sort of listed out for tender for the key sort of drivers of the project.
Yeah, yeah, very good. So I guess, yeah, I mean, a good point there is having the ability for for all of the teams or the directorates or departments across your organisation being able to, I guess, manage their own content. One of the sticking points we see with a lot of Intranets is having, you know, whether it's IT manage the Intranet and things aren't updated and that type of thing. So, you know, if I recall correctly, that was a really big key driver for you to be able to, you know, pass that ownership on to certain groups of people so that they could manage their own content. Now, if we move on quickly, we'll just quickly touch on the benefits and why you went down the Valo path as opposed to other options. So again, I'll just hand over to you just to explain why that decision was made. And then we'll move into some live demos.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the point about the content owners is key. So we've developed a model where, in order to get around the siloed nature of the way we work, we nominated a content owner from every team to be the key driver for that team for content. And so with that in mind, what we really needed was some sort of technology or platform that had, that didn't require the person who was driving that content to have technical skills. So we wanted to move away from the model internally where my team or the IT team would have to update and drive content. So Valo, we knew that that was very doable within Valo. And that's, so that was very key into us choosing Valo. Definitely ease of content creation and visually appealing. And as you'll be able to see, you know, we're a very visual organisation. So being able to have a visually appealing Intranet, I think, really helps with uptake of the Intranet. If you have something that's not very visually appealing, I think you find that people aren't likely to use it. And the final point there about search is super key. We got a lot of use out of search across our Intranet and using search queries and using all these sort of search web parts and that sort of thing to really make it so that the individual content pages are populated in ways that make a lot of sense. So that was really, those five points there were really key into our choice into Valo.
Excellent. All right. What we're going to do now, Daniel, I'm going to get you to share your screen. We're going to go through, for everybody on the call, we're going to go through some live demos, which you're going to now be able to see what Liverpool City Council have done. There's some key areas there that we're going to bring your attention to. Daniel's going to step through it and explain what each area is and also decisions that were made and that type of thing as well. So Daniel, you can start sharing your screen, which you have done already, which is good. And so here, I'll hand over to you, Daniel, but basically this is your homepage. And if you can just explain also while we're going through, especially this homepage here, because it looks amazing and obviously you guys are in a position where you've got some skills in-house, some digital skills in-house in terms of the creation of assets and backgrounds and icons and images and things like that as well, which makes a really big difference. But in terms of this homepage, just take us through the decisions that you've made on what content to have on this page here.
Sure. So it was a bit of a learning experience for us. My team's used to wireframing things out, you know, in a very traditional sense. So learning that Valo and SharePoint can be movable and depending on what you need. What we wanted to do was get a very nice mix between the communication side and the tools. Because we find that Intranet is often a key mix between the two. So we have, we made a decision obviously to have a big banner here for the key announcements. We've got a new CEO very recently. And then we wanted to get some quick links going as well. And I mentioned before, but we were very lucky in that Yama was already adopted across the organisation, has really good usage. So we wanted to get that in there and really get as much on the front page as possible without making it look clunky.
And obviously you're using the new SharePoint vertical section down on the right-hand side there. So Yama's running all the way down?
That's right, yeah, all the way down. The next thing was to these news parts, to really pull in this global news from the web, from the team sites. So we're using, we're getting a lot of use out of the search queries here. So these are being pulled, these global news features are being pulled directly from the team site. So effectively, the way that we've structured this is that every team across the organisation has their own team site. They post news to their team site and through a search query that is then pulled into the global news feed here. So that really works well with the way that we've set up the internal system of you're a content owner, you own this page, and then you push news through to the organisation through your team. It really helps internal process that way and it makes the teams feel like that their news is worthy of being seen. I think that it decentralises that sort of communication perspective.
How was news being distributed prior to having a homepage like this? How was news being distributed before that?
I think that was a big challenge for the organisation. I think that we had a challenge in finding out things happening across the organisation in a big organisation like ours. The communications team would have to seek out that news and then would then have to take that news and then it would have to come from the communications team. This way, the news comes directly from the source, which is a really big benefit for the organisation. So that's a big change that's happened through having this new technology.
And Ben, do you reckon that, from your experience talking to a lot of customers as well, that's probably still a common way of communicating, right? So all-staff emails or things like that?
Hundred percent. And I think anyone who's on the call will know, well, anyone who's on the call will certainly realise that no one really likes email. No one really wants to read, you know, email after email and have their inbox full of sort of company-wide stuff. There's a time and a place and email has certainly been moved on, shall we say.
And do you reckon, Daniel, do you reckon that's had an impact on those type of emails going out?
Absolutely. That was a key sort of driver for us, is just cut down on emails. It's like number one thing that most people want out of their Intranet is just, well, can this be put in a centralised location? And we get less emails and absolutely, it's definitely helped in that regard.
Yeah, excellent.
In the same way that the news is being pulled in, the events, as you can see across the organisation, are being pulled into a central search web part here as well. So similarly, the content owners would post an event on their team site and then that would be pulled into the front page here.
Yeah, yeah, excellent. What about, I know one of the key things for you guys was to, was the search aspect of it. And if you want to just jump into the Policies and Forms section now and take us through that, because you've done an amazing job here in terms of, in terms of using SharePoint in a really good way around metadata and tagging documents and really using, well, in this case, the Valo web parts, the search web parts here to be able to surface all of these, all of these policies and forms and procedures and using the power of those refiners on the left there to make it really easy for your end users to be able to find what it is they're looking for.
Absolutely. This was, this is really the, I think, the biggest success of our Intranet is this page. And one thing that we wanted to make sure is that what we found in, through our own internal research was that people think about how to access forms and different documents differently. So I might think about going to a Policies and Forms page to find a Policies and Forms, but some other people might think to go to the specific directorate and find the person to get it that way. So we wanted to make sure that they were accessible in both ways and it wasn't double handling. And we got a lot of use out of the Valo tags, a lot of the refiners and that sort of thing to make sure that if I know that there's a form that lives in the City Economy Team, for example, that that pops up there. Or if I search for a specific one, it pops up as well. So if I search for a Budget Review Panel Charter, it pops up that way. So there's multiple ways to access the same information.
I'm here all day, won't go for long, I don't have any other meetings.
This is effectively the master list. And the refiners on the left are broken up into whether it's a form, a policy, procedure or standard, what directorate it might live in or what team specifically it might live in. So even drilling down further. And then that is represented if I go to one of the team sites. So, and this is, I know you will jump to this next, but the specific policy here is being pulled into this team. So the IT-specific policies, because of those tags from Valo, are being pulled into this part here. So I think to go to the IT page specifically to find that policy, it's also appearing here.
Yeah, that's really good. So if you go back to the Policies and Forms page, let's say you were looking for, so if you're using the refiners on the left-hand side there.
Yep.
And you're looking for, let's say, a form from City Corporate. You can choose multiple of those. So City Corporate and then from a content type up the top, you can choose Form.
Yep. So there's a form from City Corporate and these are City Corporate teams. So it filters it down even more. So I know that I need, say, I need a policy that exists in City Corporate and I know that it's a governance, a governance policy, and then it would filter it that way. That way.
You've done some work internally as well, haven't you, around the display of those policies in that list?
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. That was a big, that was a big strategy of ours was to make sure it displays correctly.
Yeah. Yeah, excellent. One of the other areas that you were showing me and that is, well, pretty topical, I guess, at the moment is your coronavirus updates page where you've managed to bring in all the information for your staff all around that particular topic. And that page also, and we'll dive into a little bit more detail on that page and also the Working From Home resources, which again, provided an amazing resource for your staff. But just talk us through, you know, the importance of this page, what it does for your staff and then just dive into the Working From Home resources as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So we needed to develop a feed pretty quickly. Things changed, obviously everyone knows, things were changing in Australia, at least week to week, day to day. We didn't get a hard lockdown here. We got updates almost every few days from federal government that would trickle down to local government that affected not only the lives of staff personally but professionally. We have a lot of, we have both, you know, blue-collar workers and office staff and it would affect literally people's jobs depending on what they were doing. So we have a lot of frontline staff that, you know, mow people's lawns and that sort of thing and then all the way up to office staff. So we needed to make sure that we had a consistent feed of information that was coming from the top, effectively coming from our CEO. So we, you know, we developed this feed, this page, which had very clear information of what people needed. And then we, these news updates that were, you know, almost weekly, that were then filtered into the front page of the Intranet. As I think I showed before, through that tab on the left, sorry, it's just a bit, just have to refresh here. So on the front here, we developed a tab. We would move this to the front when it was appropriate, where these updates were coming through weekly to make sure that everyone who was getting the right information was updated with where we were in terms of outdoor staff and internal staff. And similarly, the Working From Home resources as well. We wanted to make sure that these Working From Home resources were, you know, front and centre of people's minds so that they could access those key corporate systems from home. We developed some resources with IT on how to work remotely, some self-assessments and that sort of thing. I think it's just all about putting front and centre what was the most relevant for staff and Valo and the Intranet helps a lot with that.
And you've done a bit around the training as well, haven't you? So if you scroll down, you've got some resources.
Yeah, absolutely.
In terms of guides and, I guess, training material so that everybody knows, you know, how to use certain applications. In this case, whether it's Teams or your third-party stuff, there's a guide there for remote access as well. So that's obviously giving your users a lot of value.
Yeah, and we have, these guides are very, they're very in level for complexity, right? So an organisation as big as ours, you have staff that have very, very basic technical knowledge and then staff that have an elevated technical knowledge. And then we had to make sure that we developed guides for all levels of staff. And then we had to make sure that we developed guides for all levels of staff. Um, and that's, you know, basics of how to use a Teams meeting, how to use a lot of it, how to use your Office 365 and then higher levels of training as well for staff that needed to use specific applications or do specific things from home as well. So that's, that was the purpose of this page.
Yeah, and you, one of your, one of your key drivers was uh to allow uh you know, the the ease of 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 content creation and and giving that ownership um, you know, down to different directorates or departments or or groups of users. Uh, do you want to just show and dive into just to into a couple of directorates um? And just explain, uh I I guess the the way that these pages uh and these sites are being managed a- across your organisation and how that that has been structured?
Sure. Um, so this is our um people, people and organisational development page. So it's a fancy word for our HR page. Um, that's the name of the team. Um, so
Everybody has a different people and culture name, don't they?
That's right. Um, so they're one of the key um teams internally, obviously one of the most important teams for an internal a team. Um, so there's a few things that we did with team pages. One is we stand, we gave, we standardised um some templates. Like, I know that you don't need to template things in something as flexible as Volo and 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 SharePoint. But we we we, to ease the content owners, we we developed some like recommended templates for these pages. So we said, well, this template looks really good with our branding. We we gave them assets to make the all the pages look nice and standard. So what we said was, look, we we think that this this page would suit your needs and we worked with the content owner to develop a page that would make sense for their programs, their forms and their content to make sure it flowed and they displayed everything. So for this page specifically, the pod page, they have four really key um programs. People achieving is like a, it's um an employee um program to um advance skills, develop intelligence. People's same employee assistance is about giving assistance for those people and Orion is our internal um HR system. Then we went down and we said, well, the next section, we want someone to think about, well, if I'm new, where do I find those resources? The safety and well-being, the pay and benefits, these are things that people want really quick access to. And we identify that through um some some internal um sessions where we sat with the the pod team and and with people across the organisation, where we said, well, what do you really want from a page from HR or from your internet? So really, they want access to their, those that let, those benefits and those leave benefits. Um, and the same thing here where these policies and forms are being, they're being pulled from that policies and forms master list. They're all here. Um, and then news and events from every, from every team as well. So um we we wanted it to flow where the things at the tops were always the things that were kind of static and people were always wanting to find out about, down to the key forms and then the news that is um specific to that um team. So um and then obviously, who who belongs to that team? So that if there's anyone that needs to be contacted from that team. So we developed effectively um a template um for every team. It's not always the same. Some teams have more content than others. Obviously, Pod is a big um internal um communication stakeholder. People like um IT or have a lot of content, but there are teams across our organisation that don't have as much content and we've given them a template to reflect that.
Yeah, and so in terms of of you um uh from a, from a a training side then, uh obviously getting people on board and being, getting them trained to to create content and manage that content. I know uh Nexon ran ran a few uh training sessions uh been with with some key people. And Daniel, did you then um spend time with, I guess, each group and filter that training that that was given to you from from Nexon all the way through to those content authors?
Yeah, and it's ongoing. Um, we, so that was the original model as well. So we're still persisting with that model where we we would train the dedicated group of content owners who would then be the the champions for their team. Um, and then that would filter through, as you just mentioned. And I think the key with training is that um uh one learning that we've had internally is that um it never really ends. But one thing that you can do is really make a big deal out of successful use cases. So one thing we've been doing is um running small sessions with either an individual or a couple of content owners, e- executing what they wanted from their page and then showing the rest of the organisation um what a successful page looks like. Because then what you do get is then a few other um teams from across the organisation saying, hey, I would really like that solution from my page. If they see a use case being um successfully used in the internet and uh it uh or a specific page being quite successful, you find that two or three or four more people come forward across the organisation saying, hey, I'd like to take that uh opportunity for for more training for myself or for my team. So I think those really small um training sessions work quite well.
Yeah. Yeah, very good. And and what are your thoughts? You're obviously very, I mean, your team is um very design orientated, I guess. Um, uh, do you think that that's, well, for you specifically in your organisation, that that's obviously a big thing to make uh make it visually appealing? And has that made a a big difference to uh to the the adoption and and use?
Absolutely. So we had a very um important uh internally, I guess, we really wanted to stress um consistency more than every anything, right? So consistency of design is one pillar of that. So we provided um in in the back of our internet, in an assets folder, standardised assets to use for banners um and a heading template um and that sort of thing. So that as a content owner, as a team, I can access those assets and make sure that my page looks up to the standard of everyone else's. Because what you do find is with this model, you give licence to people to upload images or design that um that isn't quite on the standard as the rest of the organisation. So that really did um help in that regard. And if you look at all of our assets, you know, I'm lucky in that I've got a team of two dedicated designers and design is part of our digital team. So it's it's um ingrained into what we do. Good design is always ingrained in um all of our digital assets. Um, and getting that consistent across internally and externally, I think it helps with um not only uptake of the internet, but the authority of it. I think if you have a very messy-looking internet in terms of design consistency, I think it's less likely to be taken seriously. But I think if you take the design aspects of it as equally as important as the functionality of it, it's likely to be um, it's likely to be um respected.
Hmm, yeah. Hey, I wanted to to move uh a a little bit off uh the internet side, but still in the realm of of digital workplace stuff. But I I notice um that you're running, you know, being a council, you've got council meetings and and those type of things. And uh with current state, there there can't be physical meetings and and the like. Um, how are you running, well, I know how you're running those, but how uh tell the people that are, I I guess, on the call, this is, I mean, uh there's going to be a lot, a lot of councils and a lot of other organisations in a similar boat uh in in terms of these type of meetings. Um, how are you running those at the moment?
Yeah, so we were one of the first, I think we were the very first council to run a digital council meeting because it got announced um that they were being, that we shouldn't run them. And then that night, we ran a council meeting digitally over Teams. So we ran a Teams meeting and then and the council meetings themselves are being run by Teams. So just like this meeting right now, it um our council meetings are run through Teams with the 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 council meeting document as the central sort of piece of that council meeting. Uh, it works quite well because the agenda is then in front of everyone. Um, and everyone in the meeting is uh just like we all in this meeting right now, um is then raising their hands to vote on a specific council um resolutions and that sort of thing. Um, so um that aspect has been quite successful. We're also running internally CEO updates, uh very fortnightly or weekly through the the live events function. And so less, less collaboratively like this sort of meeting is. We use the live event function to run a um uh CEO update. And then um Q and A, with the Q and A function, people across the organisation would uh then send in questions. And that was really important early on when coronavirus um was uh impacting not um work for a lot of people. So a lot of people had questions on, you know, am I still working today? Uh, are we, are we going to be able to access um our key systems with a VPN? And the CEO was on hand with key stakeholders to answer those questions through a live event and Q and A function. So we've been getting a lot of use out of both, both the Teams meetings and the and the live event function, both from a council meetings perspective and internally.
Do you publish those on the on the internet? You you publish the council meetings via YouTube and things like that. Is that then brought into into the internet as well?
Yeah, the the CEO updates are always posted on the internet. Um, and um so if you weren't able to watch them live, you then can watch them back later. And then the council meetings as well posted on YouTube and then on the internet as well.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. Yeah, good, great. Um, I stumbled across that on on the on your website the other day, looking at um yeah, looking at your council meetings. Um, now, just conscious of time as well, we'll we'll uh we'll open it up shortly if there's there's any questions. But we all know that that the internet is i- is, I guess, never-ending. Um, and once you've launched it, it's kind of not um, you know, not done. There's there's always things to to improve on, some additional features and functionality and that type of thing to to keep building on. Um, Ben, in your, in your experience, in terms of of um, you know, different, the the life cycle of an internet or the the different phases of an internet, are you seeing that um, you know, traditionally, internet engagements could tend to be uh drawn out long period of time? Are you seeing more a a change in that way in in that, you know, internet's uh uh being delivered as a a minimal viable product? First tackling a a certain set of requirements and then just continually, you know, working with with a partner or somebody like that to continually evolve that, the functionality? I think you're on mute, Ben. All right, I think anybody else, nobody else can hear. Yamo, you there?
Okay.
Yay!
Sorry about that. Goodness me, that's how busy it's been this morning. My headset has run out of batteries already. Sorry about that. Um, lucky I had a second one on on hand. Okay, so yeah, we were talking about, um, I suppose, the the approach of of keeping internets fresh. Um, and it's it's all around that adoption, right? Um, keeping people, when when your users go to an internet, they they need to be engaged. Um, and it needs to be fresh and relevant. And I think, Daniel, you spoke very well to that sort of content aware piece um of of knowing who the user is and helping them um, I I suppose, engage with the platform. How do you keep them coming back? Um, something that we do quite quite often in the scoping phase is understanding what are them, what are the 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 use cases that are the, not just the nice to house, but the the critical things um and the high impact as well. So what we do is often we will deploy what we call a minimum viable product. So it's it's the early phase. Let's get, let's get the internet in and let's get the basics on there. So it allows you to start communicating with your, with your um, with your audience um and start adding in a few value-added things that'll get them coming to the the internet. And then as you get that um, that sort of groundswell of people, you keep adding more features and functionality, which keep people coming back and saying, wow, you can do this now, wow, you know? But also, um, one of the things that we do, either through the valid platform um of one of the the modules that some people may have seen, the idea management, um or certainly just engaging your community, is saying, what would you like? What would you like on the internet? What what features would you see are going to help you do your job better or communicate um within the organisation better? So um we we really encourage sort of that velocity of deployment. Get something out, get it out there quickly and then continually evolve, continually keep it moving as technology evolves, as requirements within the business evolve. Um, and some of those really exciting things that we can add on um, uh besides the the additional Volo modules like idea management and the teamwork modules. But there's also things that you can add in from the wider Office 365 platform. You know, the Power Apps um and the Power Automate to really start to automate processes, um business processes and forms um and and digitise things and obviously bring in some of the automation, uh the um uh the AI side of things as well. Um, bot technology from Teams and where do you bring your internet in with Teams? Because so many organisations are going down the team road. So there are a lot of things, um a lot of moving parts that can be brought into this. But as I said, that that agile approach of continually evolving um is uh is definitely something that we advocate.
Hmm. All right, Daniel, that being said, what what, you know, over the next, you know, six, twelve months, wh- where um I guess, where as an organisation are you looking to uh to extend and implement? You know, now that you've got this, uh, you know, it it's an amazing-looking internet and amazing functionality that you've that you've developed already, um I I guess, what what's next for you guys?
Uh, yeah, um, actually, that's a really good segue from Ben because our next step is really uh using Power Apps and a lot of these uh Office 365 tools to really automate our processes. So um really building out um our forms um in and using multi-step um approval processes to make sure that the forms that do exist, people can um order and can sign off uh through through the internet and through um Office 365 products and have that um governance levels nice and um visible so that um we can have um forms that go up and down the chain with um, depending on, you know, what sort of form that is. I think that would be a really big uh business improvement for for anyone uh who would have that um opportunity. So that's really the next, our our next big um sort of approach to the internet is, okay, we've got this really great um sort of base now, how how can we really improve on the automation side of it?
Yeah, that's good. I mean, I guess that's that's one of the things that that Ben was touching on before about having that continual, I mean, forms, forms are and and workflows and processes are a perfect example where they'll just keep continually being added over a period of time as opposed to, you know, just trying to get them all done upfront and then launch. You just continually roll that uh, roll those 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 things out. Yeah, look, look, you've done um, yeah, an amazing, your your team has has done an amazing job. And I mean, that's um, uh, you know, for your end users, it's it's an amazing resource, communication tool. Um, and it it looks like you um are are bringing everything into that, into that one place. So it's a, it it's a great story from where where you were. All right, I think that's um, that's all we're going to present. So I really uh appreciate you guys, Daniel and Ben, for for jumping on the call, um sharing your your insights into um the the process, what's been deployed by by Nexon, how you guys have have taken that and run with it. Uh, Daniel, it's, it is a, yeah, a a great, a great internet. So Yamo, um, what's next, mate? We open it up for questions?
Yes, yeah, no, no, it's uh, we still have five minutes, oh, actually, three minutes to go uh for for the questions. So uh feel free to make questions. You can, you can simply unmute your your microphone and and ask the questions.
All right. Oh, quiet!
Excellent.
Must have done it, must have done a good job. No questions.
Yes, absolutely. Hey, tha- thanks a lot for for this this uh case story. It's it's really interesting and it was it was, uh, I have to say that it's it's really good-looking design. I I just love loved it uh uh to see, see, see those uh screenshots and and everything. So fantastic job, guys. Uh, uh, to see, see, see those uh, screenshots and, and everything. So fantastic job, guys, with, with this case and uh. Next up, we.
There is, Yamo, there is a, there is a question that's just been asked. Uh, Daniel, this will be over to you. Um, so the question is, how do the council frontline workers who do not sit at desks access the content?
Uh, yeah, that's a really good question. Um. Yeah, so we've got plenty of non-office staff. So part of this was, you know, having a, building it in a program. Where it is accessible offsite. So our internet wasn't even accessible offsite, which was very silly. So this is, you know. Embedded into their workflows already. There, we, we were already a Microsoft organization pretty through and through. So. That, that learner, that, you know, that usership was quite high and Yama was already quite used. It was quite highly used. In lieu of having an official channel like an internet. So um, they, they can access the whole internet offsite. Um, and part of it, you know, I didn't show it off, but there is a, there is a section for non-office staff. Um, and actually our next, um, and one of our very next things that we're doing is rolling out sort of checklists for non-office staffs. For their internal workflows and that sort of thing. So when they go to a site and they can use Microsoft forms almost exclusively for their internal tasks. Um, do these get, are there features to push, for instance, key policy changes to use staff, using staff technology or these disseminated teams meetings? Um, so I think that's really the next step for us is really um, digitizing their, the, their way they work. So now we've got um, adopted uh, the internet adopted as a communications tool. The next step is to really adopt it as a, as really a workplace tool within the, in, within those processes. So. Um, yes, it's accessible offsite. Um, yes, they are using it offsite. Um, and the next step is to really embed it into their internal processes of how they work.
There's um, i- in terms of that, the, the pushing that notifications out, um, on, on the roadmap. Um, i- is also Volo for Teams, right? So what that's going to allow you to do is make an announcement in your internet and actually have that push. Uh, to a, a Microsoft Teams channel, for example. So if you're, if your organization, uh, and you guys are using. Um, uh, Teams, then you'll be able to push those announcements to uh, to those Microsoft Teams channels as well, which will be uh. Something that, that i- is probably going to be on the radar for you as well to, for, for that type of communication.
That sounds really good.
Yeah, excellent. All right, um. If there's no other questions, which I don't think there is, um, I'll. Thank you guys once again. Uh, thanks everybody for joining. Hope you got something out of it. It's an amazing, uh, amazing story. So thanks, Daniel. Thanks, Ben. And uh, Yamo, over to you.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, next, uh, we have a few minutes break and then uh, we'll. Start the next session.